So we'll go ahead and get started. I wanted to welcome everyone and thank you again for coming. Tonight's the second public hearing out of the five public hearings that the city intends to hold pursuant to the California Elections Code to create the City Council Electoral Districts. This hearing was precipitated by a letter that the city received under the California Voting Rights Act from Shankman &amp; Hughes, a law firm, and the city received it on August 6th of 2018. Last week, the City Council, in their City Council meeting, adopted a resolution of intent to transition from at-large council electoral districts to district-based council member And that was done on September 19th, 2018. The California Elections Code requires the city to perform these five public hearings on a very strict timeline. So we have, the city has 90 days from last Wednesday, from September 19th, to do these five public hearings and to adopt the ordinance creating the electoral districts. As I mentioned, tonight's the second of the first two public hearings to be held to gather input from the public on the composition of the districts, and no maps are drawn until after these two first public hearings are done. We had requested if you wanted to fill out a speaker slip, even if you're not going to speak, we would use that to put you on a mailing list to get information about creating the districts. Also, there is a Spanish interpreter in the back if anybody needs to use the services of a Spanish interpreter. And there are refreshments in the very back, back there, so please help yourself to those refreshments. And at this point, I'll turn it over to Dr. Douglas Johnson of National Demographics. That's the city's hired demographer who will explain who he is and how this process is going to work moving forward for the city. Thank you.
Thank you. And let me just start, was anyone here, well, not here, but was anyone at the hearing yesterday? Or are we all new? Oh, one gentleman, okay, good. These early meetings kind of get the, it's great to see people coming out because we don't have any maps yet, so it's kind of a out-there theory idea, so it's great to see people interested, and especially coming to both meetings, so thank you. The presentation will be essentially the same, but we do have the kits now. We finished them up last night, so we'll add that to the talk from yesterday. So jumping into this, just briefly on the, what is the California Voting Rights Act? So you've probably all heard of the Federal Voting Rights Act. It's been around since 1965 and very well-established. Now we have the California Voting Rights Act, which has a much lower bar for plaintiffs to get over, for them to prove their case. So what it really does is, under federal law, there are four tests that are applied when a jurisdiction is accused of violating the law. Number one is, is the protected class group large enough to be a majority of a district, if you go to four districts or five districts? So number one, they have to be a large concentrated population. Then the second and third are kind of related. We use regression techniques to look at voting patterns from precinct to precinct and try to figure out, do Latino or African-American or Asian-American voters vote as a block for a certain candidate? That's the second test. And then do those candidates lose, which is the third test? And then the fourth test is, is race driving those elections, either overtly or covertly? And so that's the federal tests, and those have been well-established, and those of us in this field can tell you pretty quickly whether or not you're in violation of those laws. The California law is relatively new, and what it does is it knocks out the first and fourth tests. So no longer does the protected class need to be large enough to form a majority of a district. That's not even considered until we get to fixing the problem, if there is a problem. And no longer does the plaintiff have to show that race is driving voting, either overtly or covertly. All we have left now is the statistical regression analysis. If the statistics show that there's a correlation, not a causation, but any kind of correlation between one of the protected classes' voting patterns and candidates who lose, then you're vulnerable. And it's important to emphasize, there's no need to show any kind of prejudice or discrimination or anything like that. It's simply, if the numbers go against you, you're going to lose. And so this has become very widespread because the statistics are never clear. It's a gray answer every time, just about every time, there are exceptions. But, so the cases are very expensive. You get battles of experts. In Santa Monica, which is actually fighting this, the plaintiff's expert was on the stand talking statistics for six days. So that's, that's how the case ends up being, six weeks, and the city has spent, they won't say exactly yet, but they're, conservatively, we're guessing the city spent $5 million defending themselves so far. So that's why you're getting, at least 165 school districts have switched so far from at-large elections to district elections. 28 community college districts, oh, this, I didn't update this slide with our latest count, we actually just crossed 100 cities have switched. And just for perspective, before this law came along, there were 29 cities with district elections. So there were 29, and now we're at 129 in the space of about 10 years. So Justin Levitt, who spoke last night, he and I have co-authored a paper, we call it "A Quiet Tsunami Rolling Through Local Governments." Only one county board of supervisors because the other 57 counties were already by district. So San Mateo County was the last sold out, they were sued and they had to switch. And now we're seeing more and more water districts and hospital districts, places like that getting challenged and being forced to switch as well. I actually spoke yesterday at the California Special Districts Association because this is going to be a hot topic there. And it's not that these 300 jurisdictions are violating anyone's civil rights or voting rights. What's driving this are the financial details. So Palmdale is the big case, they fought it, they paid about $1.8 million to their own legal team, and then when they lost, they had to pay $4.7 million to the plaintiffs. Modesto was the first case, they similarly spend almost $2 million on their defense plus $3 million to the plaintiffs. So you get those numbers rolling in, and jurisdictions aren't going to be fighting this, unless you're Santa Monica with more or less money in the basement. The $5 million hasn't even registered on their budget, it's crazy. So you get these huge settlements, and that's why everyone's switching. And that's, and just, even those jurisdictions that want to challenge us, it's very tough to justify that. My favorite line is up the road in Murrieta, hardcore conservative town, five rock-ribbed Republicans on the council, the public was unanimous, "Fight this guy, fight this guy, fight this guy." And one of the council members said to the audience, he said, "Look, we don't have $3 million. We have a week to decide. If anyone opens a GoFundMe account and puts $3 million in it, we will vote 5-0 to fight this." And he came back a week later and actually said, "I logged into GoFundMe and checked, and none of you in the audience wrote $3 million check." So that's really what's driving this, and that's why it's so widespread. So with that said, as a little brief background, we're getting into the districting process. So this is the first kickoff phase, and this is all largely dictated by state law. The state law says we have 90 days. Here we have, I believe we have an extension, a little bit of time, but we have to have these first two hearings, which are really just educational, and the idea that written in the law is this is a chance for the public to say, what are the neighborhoods and communities that should be our building blocks before we draw draft maps? And the city, as I'll go into later on, to its credit, is going one step further, which is saying, here's some data and some maps, draw your own maps. I actually love this process, and council members tend to love it too, because normally there's a council idea, and the public comes to the podium at council meetings and says, "Yes, this is great," or "No, I hate this." Well, now the people that say, "No, I hate this," can fix it. It's a nice sense of like, "Draw your own." So it's a nice, it's very empowering, and it also lets, puts people in the council member seats for a change. So we will go through this process, there'll be tonight's hearing, you'll have some time to draw draft maps, the draft maps will all be posted a week before the next hearing, and posted to the city's website and available at City Hall. And then there'll be two more hearings where we'll actually talk about draft maps. And that's where people tend to really come out, because when you have a map to react to, that's a chance to really give concrete input rather than the more esoteric discussion today. And then we're in a little bit of a weird spot. Because we're so late in the decade, we'll adopt a map, and the way the districts phase in is, some of the districts hold an election in 2020, some of the districts hold an election in 2022. It's the same number of council seats that would normally be up, so in your case, two in 2020, two in 2022. But the census happens in 2020, and after every census, you have to update your lines. So two districts will hold an election in 2020, in 2021, the council will update the map. Hopefully, just some small changes needed, but they can change it however they want. And then the other two districts will hold elections. It's a little bit of weird timing, but that's just the result of the position the state laws put us in. So getting into the nuts and bolts, what are the rules and the goals for drawing lines? So there are two set the criteria. On the left are the federal laws, these are the must-dos. We must have an equal population in each district. And it's equal population, it's human beings as counted by the 2010 census under law. Now, we all know there's been change and there's been growth. But in the tight timeframes we're on here, we really are set, are locked into using the census data, and the courts have said if you use the census data, you're fine. No one can challenge you based on that. So there's a little bit of margin of error, but it's pretty tight. You really have to have an equal number of people in each district. Then the Federal Voting Rights Act, which says if there's a neighborhood that is heavily one ethnicity or another, well, then you can't divide that neighborhood or that community of interest in a way that dilutes their voting strength. But at the same time, you can go too far. I'll show you a map in a moment, kind of city block by city block with ethnic estimates, and you can't draw by colors. You know, it, race can, no racial gerrymandering means race cannot be the predominant factor. You know, so earlier, I said the Voting Rights Act just said neighborhoods that are predominantly one ethnicity, we still need to focus on drawing maps based on neighborhoods, and that's how you avoid race becoming predominant. So those are the requirements, and that's it in terms of what's required. Where the policy choices come in and where kind of good government and gerrymandering claims come in is in traditional redistricting principles. So these are goals, these are things that courts have signed off on and said, these are acceptable, really, what the court said, they're acceptable reasons to slightly alter your population balance, and so they've been signed off on. So number one is communities of interest, really neighborhoods, I'll talk a little bit more about this later. The second group is make the lines compact, contiguous, and follow major roads. That's really so it's easy for people to know which district they're in. If you like a candidate and you want to go knock on doors, it wants to be easy to know which doors to knock on. You know, it gets hard when you're, one block is in, the next one's out, one block's in, and the next one's out. All three of these are goals. The equal population requirement is a beast, and it messes with this a lot, but they're things we can try to do. Respect voters' choices and continuity in office. The other piece that can be considered, and again, these are goals, not requirements, is you can look at your current council, who are interested in running again, and try to not put them in separate seats. Now, the reason for this, everyone, that always gets tackles up initially, the reason for this, from our perspective, is actually for the voters. We want the voters to decide which council members have earned reelection. So if there are two council members in one seat, it doesn't matter if the voters think they both earned reelection, the voters can only have one. So our lines are going to knock someone out of office, no matter what the voters think. So if possible, and within the other goals, if you can, if the map ends up with council members in separate seats, that's great. And it's certainly acceptable. Then plan future growth, this one we kind of gray out a little bit, growth since 2010. Because the lines will only be used once, we're not really looking at future growth. In 20, we put it on the chart though, because when you go back through this process in 2021, we don't want to be a surprise. So in 2021, those lines will be in place for 10 years, for five election cycles, and you'll definitely want to look at that issue. Yeah.
So we have an election coming up this November for two council seats, which are currently at large. So the two people that are elected this November, we have no idea whether they'll be in the same district, different districts, what district they might be in.
Right.
Because we don't want to get elected. Are you looking at, if they're in separate districts, that they would be the ones that wouldn't come up till 2022, or are they going to have to run again this year?
So they won't have to run again, so the question is what happens with people who are running, I'm repeating just because I have the mic and this is being recorded. The question is, the candidates who were elected this year, how do they impact the process? Do we need to consider where they live? This is the other quirk of the 2020 census going on. So council members are elected to represent whoever elected them. So those two council members will remain at-large council members all the way to 2022. So if they were to resign, to replace them would be an at-large, citywide replacement, anything like that. Which brings the added twist, which is ideally, they just happen to live in the empty seats. But they will actually get to redraw the lines in 2021. So if they end up together or in a seat with a 2020 council member, it won't impact their current term. They get their four years at-large, no matter what. And in 2021, the lines, if it's easy to adjust them within those other criteria, the lines can be adjusted so that they can then run, and the voters can decide whether they've earned reelection.
So it's conceivable you could have two elected officials in the same district?
Or three. Oh, and if the mayor...
Or until it all, like, over a period of time, and eventually everyone will invite this?
Exactly, yeah.
Until they, until four years out, the at-large people would no longer be at-large?
Exactly right, yeah. Every time you go through this process, there's this weird two-year period with two bi-district representatives and two at-large representatives. It's just how it phases in, because the law actually says you can't shorten the terms of people on the council at the time. And in this case, and it often comes up when we're doing this earlier in the decade, and when we get stuck by the plaintiff's attorneys in this weird timeframe of doing this during campaign, candidates will say, "Oh, you know, the council doesn't like me. They're drawing the lines so that even if I get elected, I can't run for reelection." Well, the nice thing, the one silver lining being so late in the decade is actually if they're elected, they will have a say in redrawing the lines, and they can fix that. So that's not a, this council can't prevent them from running again in the future. So that takes that argument away, thankfully. Yes?
But in the 2020 election, the lines will have been drawn?
Yes.
Two council members will be no longer at-large, but by which of the four districts will those come from?
So it's a good question. So in 2020, which of the two districts will hold an election? The answer is when the council adopts a map at the end of this process, they will also assign election years to each seat. So if those two, if the council members who were elected in 2016, who are up for reelection in 2020 are in separate seats, the logical approach is to assign those two. But it is a council decision, and it'll be in the ordinance adopting the map. And actually, the law, when it talks about the two hearings held to discuss the draft maps, actually specifically says, "Discuss the draft maps and the election sequence." So when we release the drafts, there will be proposed election sequence on there, but it's complete, that's just to get the discussion going. So, yeah. Yes, yeah. I tell you, if you end up with two councils, well, it won't really kick in here because of the 2022 redrawing, but if you end up with two council members who are on different election years in the same seat, we have a whole nother 10-minute presentation on how that's handled, because it gets very, very complicated. So we spare you that until that becomes a possibility.
The two that are being elected this fall will have four-year terms regardless.
Correct.
Because they're elected at-large.
Correct.
And then it'll sort itself out as it comes along.
Exactly, yeah. Just to restate, the two elected this year will have four-year terms, nothing can impact any council member's current term. So let me jump into the numbers, I'm not going to go through all these numbers, but briefly, up here in the top is your 2010 total population, 26,324. So that divided by four, which is on your printouts, I don't know off the top of my head, 8,000, no, 6,000 something. There we go, 6,581, thank you. That's the target population. And so the goal is to have every district as close to that as possible. Now, it's a pretty small number, and so moving one city block can impact that. So the rule is that the difference between the smallest and largest has to be less than 10% of that target, so about 658. So your largest district can be no more than 658, larger than your smallest. Ideally, it'd be even closer than that, but that can be hard.
So, but that doesn't differentiate between the percentages of children and whites, just total numbers?
Correct, that is a total population, breathing human beings, which are the numbers we use. Now, the next category, and then you have total population broken down by ethnicity, that's more of a, in case you're interested. The next category, the citizen voting age population, this also comes from the Census Bureau, it's actually updated every year, it's an estimate, it's not a door-to-door count like the census is. This is where our Voting Rights Act compliance comes from. So you can see, citywide, Hispanics or Latinos are 41% of the citizens' voting age, which we also refer to as eligible voters. These are people who are eligible to register and vote. Far too many of us don't, but that's what the courts look at. And this is, this is probably what attracted the lawyers to send the letter too, is the fact that the city's 49%, actually, today it's probably over 50% Latino, and one-third white, but when you get down to voting population, it's essentially an even split. And that's the kind of differences that these plaintiff's attorneys tend to look for. And so what we'll look for is, you know, can you draw a reasonably compact, following major roads and following neighborhoods, district that is majority Latino, or two? You know, that's, that's what we'll be looking at for Voting Rights Act compliance. The other data, voter registration and turnout data, we actually have by ethnicity, just to be, sometimes it's confusing. This is based on surnames, so these are ballpark numbers, because obviously surnames, plus or minus. The state compiles this, it's actually an official California database. But the Census Bureau has done studies of the surname lists, and in California, they found that about 10, the net result of erroneous misses and erroneous counts is that about 10% of Latinos are missed. So we actually give you that estimated Latino. By surnames, 38% of the registered voters are Spanish-surnamed, which, based on this census adjustment, leads to about a 43% of registered voters are probably Latino. So that's why those two numbers are both there. Some people like to use Latino, the adjusted number, some people like to use the surname number, so we give you both. Asian-surnamed, Filipino-surnamed, really small. We then use some math to try to estimate white versus black, because obviously there's no surnames for those two groups to separate the two, but we have the numbers we can estimate. And you're only about 5% of your registered voters are African-American or black. So all this data, and all the data on the right, will be given for every district, in every map. And where this really gets useful is if people are looking at Spanish-speaking at home, renters versus homeowners, multifamily housing versus single-family housing, all that data is here, and so when the maps come out, you can look at the maps and say, hey, is there a heavily renters district in this map, or is there a heavily Spanish-speaking? If anyone's interested in looking at those numbers, they're all available. And we can map the data I mentioned earlier, we can map the estimates for the ethnic data, we can map the census block by census... Turn myself off. Census block by census block. So these are your city blocks. In order to show more data, we cut off the bottom part of the city because there's no one down there. But the red city blocks are 75% or more of the eligible voters are Latino. The yellow is 65 to 75%, and the green is 50 to 65%. So it's a little hard to tell the greens from like blues on the screen, but the greens, yellows, and reds are your majority Latino city blocks. Again, these are estimates, these are not door-to-door counts, but pretty good numbers. So obviously, you're getting, you know, much more Latino population in the northeast and in the east part of the city than in the west.
There's a question, I know we're talking about four districts, but is it possible to have two districts and have two representatives in each of the two districts? Or do you have to go for four?
Yeah, the question comes up a lot, can we go for two districts with two representatives from each one? And given this kind of breakdown, it might make sense. Unfortunately, in the California Voting Rights Act, they specifically wrote in, the only safe harbor is single-member districts. So everything else is considered at-large, and they can sue you. So, so there are jurisdictions that are various versions of that throughout California. They're pretty rare, but they are vulnerable to a challenge, unfortunately. We also did the map for Asian-Americans and African-Americans, and no surprise, given their small numbers, there's no geographic concentration of either one of those. So other than ensuring that we don't dilute the voting rights of really the Latino population is the only one that we're going to have and have to monitor, given their numbers here, the main focus tends to be communities of interest. So what the heck is a community of interest? It's whatever the people in a given area say it is, is what it boils down to. It can be an officially city-defined neighborhood, it could be a school attendance zone, it could be an area around a park. That's why we do these hearings, is to try to find out what people think are their neighborhoods. And there's a second question that's often forgotten, which is, okay, here's your community of interest or your neighborhood, do you want it kept together in one seat so you have the maximum voting strength to elect the one council member that's going to represent you? Or do you want to be divided, so that you have two council members who have to come to your neighborhood on election day? And in particular, here where you have a citywide mayor, keep in mind, if you're divided, then your neighborhood, obviously each voter's only voting for one council member, but your neighborhood is voting for two council members plus the mayor. That's a majority of the council. So that's getting a majority of the council has to come to you. And one thing to keep in your mind that people often struggle with is, city councils, even after they go to districts, they're not the county supervisors. You know, counties, the supervisors run their district, they make all the decisions for their district, it's more or less, you know, they call them the kings and queens. Cities are never like that, especially the smaller cities. It still takes three votes, and you don't get anywhere near the, "This is my district, you guys keep away" kind of issues that you do at the county supervisors, especially here where it's so small. You know, I have a joke, if the project's in another council member's district, but the traffic from it's going to hit my district, well, then I'm going to care. And in small jurisdictions, it's the pedestrian traffic that's going to hit, you know, so you won't have nearly that kind of county supervisorial kings and queens effect. But you will still want people accountable to you. And so that's the way to think about, traditionally, jurisdictions, neighborhoods do want to be compact, they do want to be kept together about two-thirds of the time. And here's some samples, this is actually the city council districts in Compton, Compton's funny-shaped, as many cities are. But this is about as quadrants as you can get. It's a little bit of population balancing between two of them that was required, but this is what we think of when we think of traditional districting, nice square districts. Same thing with Glendale Unified, and a north seat, a northwest seat, very regional seats. Those are traditional maps. And about two-thirds of jurisdictions go that way. But more and more lately, especially the California Voting Rights Act, people are going for alternative maps. So you can have funny-looking maps that have a very good policy reason. So Pasadena, when they went to districts, Old Town Pasadena, anyone been to Old Town Pasadena or familiar with it? Old Town Pasadena was just being developed, you didn't go there after dark. And so they wanted all of the council members to have a stake in Old Town, so every council district touches Colorado. It leads to, leads to some funny-looking shapes, and it's worked. I mean, Old Town is the classic, no one goes there anymore because it's way too crowded. You know, it's a huge success, and they've kept these lines for three redistrictings because it's worked. And that, and that was a very deliberate policy choice. Central Unified is a school district up by, this is Fresno, and then this is farming. So they wanted every school attendance zone to have three trustees representing it. Well, that takes some really crazy lines. But it worked. They went from no Latinos to four Latinos, which was the reason for the change, and every board member essentially feels responsible for every school. And then tiny little South Pasadena, the whole city's one square mile, and they got hit with a challenge. So their goal was to preserve an at-large feel, have each council member touch each neighborhood, which is why they have these long districts that go from north edge of town. So there can be policy-driven reasons to go for funny-looking maps, especially in smaller jurisdictions. Up, up the coast, in Cenitas, they wanted the districts to all touch the beach. So they have these horizontal districts. So there, this is, I mainly show this to think, you don't necessarily want your community of interest united, you might want it divided with multiple council members coming and answering you on election day. But again, about two-thirds of jurisdictions end up with these kinds of maps, and about one-third with these. Neither one is right or wrong. And you can have a mix, actually, South Pass, over here, when they, when we tried to draw north and south, they just decided that was too crazy, it got too weird. And so we have two that are kind of compact in the east, and then three that are vertical. So you can do a mix of that, too. So the goal of this hearing and yesterday's hearing is really to get input on what, if you have thoughts on it, on what are your communities of interest, how should lines be drawn, and to answer your questions, of course. But I do want to also show the tools, since we are doing the tools. So let me flip over here. So first of all, not sure how well you can see this, but, oh, and, so the map that is titled in the top left, the Public Participation Kit, and there's Spanish versions as well, this is a map that lets you draw a map and population balance it. And so each of these black outlined areas is what we call a population unit. It's, it's bigger than those It's, it's bigger than those individual census blocks that you saw earlier, but we group them together to try to balance flexibility, so you can draw the map that you want to draw with not overwhelming you with data. And so the numbers shown on this map are the total population of each of those population units. And then up in the top right, let's see, oh, I pulled up the wrong one. This is Simi Valley. Sorry about that. That's actually the template, so when I just click on it, it pulls it up. Let me get the right one here. That's the one I want. That looks better, right? So, so yeah, so, so they're, they're fairly small, couple, few city blocks each. And if you look up here in the top left, here's that 6,581 target number, with a reminder that the largest and smallest have to be 658 or fewer apart. So you can just start drawing your lines. This population unit goes all the way down, and this population unit goes all the way down. Not really worried about down there, because there's no people, of course. And then you can send this in. You can draw your map and mail it in. You can scan it and email it in. I don't know why I never thought of this. A few projects ago, someone just took a picture of their map and emailed in the picture. Worked perfectly, and much better than a scan. Or you can drop it off at City Hall as well, if someone doesn't have an email or don't want to do that. We do ask that you share your contact information, number one, because city councils put more weight and input that has a name associated with it. This is all going to the council. And number two, because if there's a mistake, if the math is wrong, we'll let you know. When we get it, we'll process it. We put it in the computer, and it goes to council, looking like every other map that we draw. And if, if the math didn't work out, we'll email you and let you know.
Quick math question. You show up there, you see Imperial Beach Boulevard?
Yeah, I see. Is that the wrong one?
All right, go south.
You're pointing down here?
Yeah, and it says 1,117?
Yeah.
You've got to be kidding.
Well, there's almost 500 people in the little Caspian Way bump there, and then on the, and then on the outside of Caspian Way is about 600 people.
Okay.
Yeah, and on the south side of Imperial Beach. It's weird, because yes, those 1,100 people are in about 2% of the territory. Yeah, they're all right on the border. Yeah. Same thing here with the 607.
Yeah, they've got to be right there.
They're all on Tower Road. So yes, that's very true. We don't require the name and contact information. We will process it and send it to council without that. But number one, if there's a mistake, we can't let you know. And number two, every council always likes to know who the map's from, as does the public generally. So, yes.
Just a quick question. And then the map that you showed that showed the concentration of Hispanics by Census Tract, is that available to us as well?
It, it will be on the city website. I don't think it is yet, but we'll get all these PowerPoints up. One of the challenges of the, of the 90-day timeline is we are actually launching before really ready to launch, which is why we didn't have these yesterday. So we're, we'll be adding stuff throughout the process. And if you want any of that other data mapped, we can map that as well, renters, that kind of stuff. Now, one caution, though. That data is all collected by Census Tract, so it's not as precise as the ethnic data, and it just gives you kind of a neighborhood breakdown. It doesn't give you a block-by-block breakdown. The other piece here, oh, so, an online version of this, this isn't up yet, but it, we'll get it ready by tomorrow. Oops. What it will be is, this online map, it's actually from ESRI, but it essentially works like Google Maps. You can zoom in and out, oops. And so when you're saying, you know, I've got some street names on that map, but if you want to see the details of exactly where these dashlines going, you go to the interactive map that'll be linked from the city website, and you can turn that layer on. It'll be listed here, and you would zoom in, and you could see exactly what it is. The other piece that this map really does, that we were actually using earlier, is satellite images. So you can, if you're looking for, where's, you know, the Safeway, or whatever the building is, you can find it using that. The other option that people rarely find, but if you, if you're into it, if you scroll down here, there's one called Open Streets. Open Streets' goal is to map every government and business building in the country. And so as you zoom in on this, business names start appearing. So if you're trying to figure out where the school is, or where the target is, or wherever that is, it will probably pop up in this version. So there's a lot of flexibility in this, and it lets you figure out exactly where you're actually drawing your lines. The last piece I'm going to mention is, so we looked at the, the Public Participation Kit, and this is, this is all you need, is that one page. You can add up your numbers, send it in. The second map that's over there, let me show you the right one, all that, it'll track your registration turnout by surname data. And this box up here, which is actually red, it looks purple on the screen, it's actually red, when you get into that 650 range, it will turn green. So it'll tell you where you're at. The other piece of this that's handy is, as you're doing it on this page, you get running totals up at the top. So I've, I've assigned these four population units, and I'm, which gives me 3,767 people so far, and I need 2,814 more. The catch to this is be careful, because what happens is people go through and they're like, oh, I'm off by 500, or I'm off by 600, I'll switch this one to two, and boom, I balanced perfectly. And they don't look back at the map, and the population unit they just changed isn't connected to the district they just did. So it's a very handy tool, as long as you're careful, but we get a lot of non-continuous maps this way. But again, this is something, and again, this file is posted in both, or will be posted in both English and Spanish, and it is, it'll save you having to do the math. And it'll give you the ethnic data if you want that as well. So we do encourage sending a map. Don't feel like you have to use these tools. These are purely options for those that want to dig into the numbers. We're perfectly happy to get, you know, a street map with lines drawn on it. Or, you know, we often get, like downtown businesses, you know, chamber commerce maps, with maps drawn on them. Whatever form you want to submit your input in is encouraged and welcomed, and we do appreciate it. We, we take everything that comes in, and we convert them, we put them in our computers, and they'll all look the same when they go to council. So it won't look like a bunch of scribbles, it'll be an input in the computer map that works. So that is my spiel, but we still have lots of time. So if you have questions, or if you want to, like, kick off your thoughts on your communities and neighborhoods, that's all encouraged. Yes?
I had some questions. I guess until the census comes out in 2021, or, well, my question is, how do you account for proposed or future development? It's the answer, it looks like it don't.
Right. So in, in this case, we're so late in the decade, no one's going to be in there by four and vote in 2020. In 2021, there can be some of that, and really, all you can do is that 10% range I talked about, since you figure out which districts are likely to have the most growth, and you put them at the lower end of that range. And then the ones that aren't likely to have growth yet, you put it at the higher end of that range. You're still only talking about a 650-person adjustment. There's not a lot you can do, but we can do that. Yes?
Are there other remedies besides districting that would bring us into compliance with the voter registration?
So the question is, are there other remedies other than districts that would bring us in compliance? It's a complicated question. Number one, nothing else is a safe harbor. So any, there are other systems that might effectively address the issue that the law is intended to address, but you would not be safe from a lawsuit from someone who doesn't think they go far enough. Districts is the only safe harbor where no one can sue you. So there, there are choices like cumulative voting, and ranked choice voting, and those kinds of things that are out there, and they get talked about a lot. But in the end, you know, even if the person who sent you the original letter agrees to it, someone else can sue you. So that, that's why, and the other problem is, is that state law has a lot of barriers, and the county voting systems generally don't accommodate those systems. So there's a lot of technical stuff, too. But really, there are alternative systems that address the issue, but districts are the only safe harbor. Okay. Is there a question over here? Anyone else have questions or suggestions? Or, the other piece, too, is if you have thoughts now, if there is a downtown part or something like that, or in this case, perhaps the southern, do you refer them as the wetlands, or I don't know, have you referred to the south wetland?
Estuary.
Estuary, thank you. You know, some cities, they want every district to touch the estuary, or every district to touch the beach, so that every councilman has a piece of that. So that's certainly something coming on.
Well, actually, I have some comments. Can you put the map back up that we have the...
Uh, which, you're looking at this one, or?
Well, either one, actually.
Oh, there's this. It's the simple map.
Oh, well, no, I was thinking of this.
Oh, oh, yes.
So, here's my thoughts. The city's only four square miles, so I know that, you know, most of the, most of the community probably would not be in support of doing this on their own, but we're kind of being forced into doing it. How, having said that, in my knowledge, over the last 25 years, I, I don't see anything really tied to servings as a barrier or a challenge for people getting elected. It's more geographic. But then when you look at the map, you can clearly see the demographics follow certain geographic lines. So, for example, in the last 25 years, to the best of my knowledge, we've had no elected official that's lived west of Ninth Street, or, I'm sorry, we've had three elected officials that have been, that lived east of Ninth Street. So our current councilmember, Lloyd Bragg, and then we had Councilmember Bud Harbin and Councilmember Don Hall. None of them from the north side of town at all. No, no elected representatives north of Palm Avenue. So to me, in looking at the goals of this, which I would think would be engaging, underrepresented community, getting them put up in the possibility of getting elected, we would have to look at neighborhoods in those particular areas. So you have the north side and the east side. We did a neighborhood revitalization project a number of years ago, where we did identify specific neighborhoods in the community. There were more than four, though. But, you know, they were centered more around the schools, so there was the Ollontown District, Central, Bayside. And I would, I would advocate for neighborhoods that were the compact and contiguous, because if you're in a neighborhood that hasn't had people that were engaged politically or thought that they really could run for office and win, being in a neighborhood where they've been living for the last, you know, 20 years, raised their kids, they know their neighbors, I think there's really a much better chance for them to launch a campaign and be successful in being elected. I would be very wary of corridors or ribbons that ran east to west, because I think what would happen in that case is we would have exactly what we have today, and the 98% of our elected officials would be living west of Ninth Street, if we had east-west corridors. So I think that's what would happen. So my, my thoughts would be to do it by neighborhoods that were contiguous, as much as you can with getting those numbers jockeyed in there, and particularly looking at the north side and the east side, and having some well-defined districts, so that those neighborhoods can really be competitive in having a successful candidate to get elected.
Now, that, that's kind of what we're looking for, and we appreciate it. And I, I would note, on the idea of the, the north side, actually, one of the, as we finish this, oops, the wrong one up. See, let the map back up. As we finished these maps last night, one of the, one of the input, actually, from yesterday's meeting that we already incorporated, is to be sure that Palm Avenue was a dividing line, so that if you want to draw your map, focusing on a district above Palm, as you mentioned, where there hasn't been a representation, you can do that with this kit and be sure of it.
And I think the other challenge, if you were trying to run east to west, is you, you've got very different neighborhoods. It's just, it's not, it's not a community.
Right.
To focus on communities and neighborhoods.
Now, that, that is...
Another complicating factor, if you look at these numbers, is that southeast corner is extremely dense.
Down here is very dense, yes.
Down here is very dense, and you can't put very many with them.
Right. No, it's very true.
That's going to complicate the issue.
Yeah, and that's kind of what you get in the South Pasadena version, where the, they wanted the north-south, but really, it only worked to have three north-south, and the other two were more compact. Because yes, you do, it's good you guys are getting the numbers, but yes, where you have more dense housing, in particular apartment buildings, you know, you can look at this and spot them, you know, the thousand, the 1,400, you know? You put 1,400 in your one quarter of the way to a district on that one population unit.
And you put 800, right, so that's...
Yeah. The one piece I would add, too, I forgot to mention this, is if, if you want to divide one of these, obviously, you don't have the numbers, but you can guess at it. As long as you've, when you send your map in, just, as long as you're following a street in the computer, we can probably go down to the census block level and actually divide it and get numbers. So if you wanted to, you know, divide this block vertically, where it's 655, obviously, you'll be guessing at your numbers, but you can say, please divide this along this street, and when we input it, we can do that, as long as you're following a street, because if, if you don't follow a street, then there's no geography for us to follow in the computer. But that is an option if you're, if you're stuck trying to hit those numbers. The other piece you can do is if, if you just can't get it within, or an 80, but you have it within 700 or 720, just say, can you clean this up in this area? You know? And we, we have a lot more power in the, in the laptops than you do on a piece of paper. So, yeah. So, other thoughts or questions? Otherwise, the reason we do these kits is to get you to go home and talk to your neighbors, and talk to your neighborhood watch, and talk to your homeowner group, or whoever you'd like to talk to, and come up with ideas, and send in maps representing your neighborhood and that your neighbors think makes sense for your area. So please do. And I understand there's a candidates forum later this evening, so have fun at that. And if there are other questions, I'm happy to answer one-on-one, but thank you all for coming out. Jennifer, any last comments?
Oh, no, just, just to note that October 8 is the deadline for the maps submission to the public.
Right. Perfect. Yes.
And on the timeline sheet, that's, that's also up there, so October 8 is the deadline for the public.
Exactly. When we kick off that second round of map, second round of hearings, where we're looking at the maps and we posted the drafts, we'll only post stuff that we have by October 8. So it doesn't mean you can't come in later and say, can you adjust these maps? But it does mean that's why we need them to be in that discussion. So thank you all, and look forward to seeing your maps. Appreciate it.
Thank you.[1737.65]